Thank you. The Manayavarium in the air at the the Life Divine by the orangina it will she Annekeum she Bhavanukum the Vayipani Namakke here Priti Kordutar Kaha Namada Nandriyam Wanakatiyam Avrulaladu Porpaadatil Samarpipoom Naaminga Sindi Kum Ovaru Yenathayam Pesham Ovaru Vartheyam Avrulakku Kaaanikiyaha Nam Samarpipoom Anivarkum Maali Wanakkam Ipana number Pona Session Laande Chapter Life Divine La Chapter Seventeen The Divine Soul Adumudichon Inthe Session Laande Chapter Eighteen Pakron The Mind And Super Mind Adupaka Paro Alukmunaadi Number Anbar Ramalakshmi Avangande Oru Or Wind Hole Wind Hole Or With The Tangay Enna Badiina Indha Soonly Laande Romba Eengbataalum Oray Oru Soham Tarakkudiya Nigirvul Akhane Gargintra Indha Oru Depressing Situation Idile Onthe Namaya Eppidi Namaya Onthe Namay Nam Padaikathukolluvathu Padaikathukolluvathu Na Physical La La Emotional La Nambley Namay Nam Yevaru Padaikathukolluvathu Enandhal Idile Am Number Indha Ushayangala Kailipadichinrom Namudiyah Niringiyavarkale Badikepadaranga Illa Avanga Avanga Namavittu Chelikin Chelikin Raargal Idile Am Pakkumbothu Romba Ah Namakondhu Romba Disturbinga Arkenirkenrathu So Itthaya Itthaya Soonly La Nam Edan Adipadil Nam Teramaha Namay Terapaditikollavendum Indha Kelluvayavkaetaan Avukaeta Thodori Artham Isidhanan Kekaran Adhanencha Adhanan Prindukondain Idikondhu Avukaeta Odane Enakondhu Oru Nan Samiavathla Paditha Motherodiya Prayers And Meditation Ah Adu Vando Oru Siranda Or Varihaatiyaga Adu Enakka Thondrichinrathu March Padinjel Ayyathitha Laerthi Padinale Idu Vando Avukaeta Kailipadikun Na Idu Vando Recenta Vando Ah Nan Padithen Adanaala Enak Avukaeta Ona Indha Prayers Sam Enak Enyaavagavundhu March Padinjel Ayyathitha Nineteen Fourteen Adana Pakikinra When Physical Conditions Are A Little Difficult And Some Discomfort Follows If One Knows How To Surrender Completely Before Thy Will Carrying Little For Life Or Death Health Or Illness The Integral Being Enters Immediately Into Harmony With Thy Law Of Love And Life And All Physical Indisposition Ceases Giving Place To A Calm Wellbeing Deep And Peaceful Idal Enna Soruranga Badiina The Suktrupuranthu Physical Conditions Adu Vando Namakondhu Saadakhama Illa Adampurudhu Namakurukkara Oray Ubayam Enna Badiina The Saranagati Tha Saranagati Edikita Namapannanu Badiina The Irayvanodiya Seththatkun Namay Saranagatiyaga Upaditikolluvathu Adhan Soruranga Surrender Completely Before Thy Will Enandhal Anithame Nadaakarathu Elammie Namadikadi Life Divine Li Pakron Ma Anneyanodiya Ratings Li Pakron Elathukapinnadi Oru Oru Divine Intelligence Supreme Intelligence Sa Indha Indha Ella Nigirvugaliyin Abadi Nadaakikinrathu Adu Namudiyariu Ketta Amaruklaana Adu Thaan Vai Nadaakikinrathu Appadipatta Soonly La Namandha Ella Me Indha Irayvanin Sangalpam Adunodiya Undhuthidinall Nadaapadinall Andha Sangalpatthirku Namay Saranagatiyaga AkiKollavendum Adhan Sorurun Adhit Thaan Enga Anne Kukurikindragal Carrying Little For Life And Death Namulodiya Vaaikayapurtiyam Vaaikayapurti Vaaikayakuritho Illa Maranam Kuritho Illa Namunudiya The Udalnalam Kuritho Illa VyadiKuritho Yendavi Thakavaliyam Padakkoodada Bidingraanga Adi Elam Namvando Purutpadutama Saranagatiyadino Badiina Enna Nadaakav Bidingraanga Mother Namakta Vande Integral Being Oru MujuMiyana Jeevan Namakta Arkathu Nam Nam Vande Merpoorajeevanla Vaaikinrom Namol Irkakkudiya Andha MujuMiyana Ull Jeevan Adu Vando Udonadiyaga Andha Iray Sangalpatthodan Or Uthisayodan Adu Thannay Inaythukollikinrathu Enandhal The Iray Sangalpam Inbadu Adunokka Adunodiya Adipadigunammy Indha Iray Anbu Tha Divine Love Adunodan Thaan Adu Odane Uthisayavay Airpaditikollikinrathu Idimari Namasurrender Panna Odane Andha Uthisayave Adu Airpaditikollikinrathu Mother Enna Soruranga Udonadiyave Namulodiya Ellaavidamana Indha Asahuriyangal Physical Indisposition Vyadi Manam Sambandappatta Ah Tholegal Idi Elamme Vande Completea Vande Mariidom Bidingraanga Nindubedindruidom Bidingraanga Adhakupadilaha Enna Namakul Thondram Enral A Calm Wellbeing Deep And Peaceful Oru Amidiyana Oru Nalla Unarvu Wellbeing Na Namalakkuro Bidingra Oru Unarvu Oru Amidi Idukittum Bidingraanga Appra Innova Innova Karthi Solikindragal Adi Nan Pakikinraen I Have Noticed That When One Enters Into An Activity That Necessitates Great Physical Endurance What Tires One Most Is Anticipating Beforehand All The Difficulties To Which One Will Be Exposed It Is Much Wiser To See At Every Moment Only The Difficulty Of The Present Instant In This Way The Effort Becomes Much Easier For It Is Always Proportionate To The Amount Of Strength The Resistance At One's Disposal Enna Kuriharal Enral Oru Karim Sayyavathukavunadi Andha Oru Karim Markatton Illa Idimari Oru Soonly La Galan Namuniklaana Nam Nam Endhalavukka Padaikathukpadihinrom Nam Udalnalam Endhalavukka Nanrahe Irkikinrathu Ah Nam Indimari Oru Virusla Arkathu Expose Or Expose Akin Akinra Namay Namay Nam Expose Edukolkikinrom Ay Endhalavukka Nam Padaikappa Irkikinrom Indha Indimari Kelluvayalna Erezikinrathu Adhaktha Mother Enna Soruranga Tholegalay Vande Tholegalayum Difficulties Adi Vande Edirbathu Vaarakkoodada Bidingraanga One Should Not Live In An Anticipation Before All The Difficult Beforehand All The Difficulties Or Idu Vandrumo Adu Vandrumo Nanikronla Adu Thaan Mother Soruranga Adumari Tholegalay Edirbathu Nam Vaarakkoodada Bidingraanga Appra Idu Idu Vande Butthisaletan Bidingraanga Andhanda Samitla Enna Prachinay Varikinratho Adaimathar Tha Ninga Focus Pananga Bidingraanga Oru Tholegalidu Vandrumo Adu Vandrumona Edirbathu Vaaraman Tholegalay Edirbakaaman Indha Samitra Nam Endha Prachinay Nam Edirkolkikinrom Andha Prachinayla Mathro Focus Panasoruranga Badi Pannanu Badiina Enna Nadaakav Badiina Ah Namakondhu Andha Valime Kadekav Bidingraanga Valime Edirputthammy Idila Vande Namkittum Bidingraanga Appra Innova Karthi Solikindragal The Body Is A Marvelous Tool It Is Our Mind That Does Not Know How To Use It And Instead Of Fostering Its Suppleness Its Plasticity It Brings A Certain Fixity Into It Which Comes From Preconceived Ideas And Unfavorable Suggestions Romba Apadama Soruranga Enna Soruranga Na Namrododiya Udal Vande Oru Apadamaana Oru Karivya Bidingraanga Marvelous Tool Abidingraanga Idi Ingaprachinapandu Idi Ingakulprit Badiina Namrododiya Mind Mind Tha Ingavande Prachinakudukakkudiyaal The Mind Enna Pannu Manam Mindik Vande Bodya Eppidi Use Pantrandu Thirill Bodya Vande Adunodiya Yelahum Thammy Adunodiya Oru Nigirvuntamni Idi Elam Vande Adu Vande Valime Paduthathu Thakupadilaha Adu Vande Enna Sayhinrathu Enral Manam Thaan Yerknaveva Thaan Manadil Kondulla Ennangalayum Suktruparatthal Indha Vaarakkudiya Oru Unfavorable Suggestions Sambit TV Pakron Namrododiya Friendsalna Soruranga WhatsAppla Vada Kari Naraya Negative Informationla Vardhu Idi Elam Vaachikita Nam Mind Vande It It Is Influencing The Body Bidingraanga Idi Thaan Karunamblakku Appra Artha Oru Pray Artha Part Enna Soruranga But The Supreme Science Oh Lord Is To Unite With Thee To Trust In Thee To Live In Thee To Be Thyself And Then Nothing Is Any Longer Impossible To A Man Who Manifest Thy Omnipotence So Idile Vande Idi Mukyamana Ushayam Badiina Andha Sarvaallamipurundhyan The Iray Sakti Oda Namay Namay Inaythukolluvathu Andha Sakti Inmail MujuMiyana Nambikvayipathu Andha Sakti Udan Saktiay Sakti Udan Nam Yepurudamey Vaarvathu Namrododiya Vaarvaya Adunodan One Raha Inaythukolluvathu Andha Sakti Thaan Nam Vaarvil Ella Me Enti Nenaythathu Indha Unarvu Dan Namay Irundha Badiina Namal Edumey Muddiyadathu Illai Enre Anne Kuriharagal So Indha Prayers And Meditation Vande The March Seventeenth Nineteen Fourteen Idu Vande Itthaya Indha Soonly Ke Avgaavang Avanga Ramalakshmi Madam Ketaanga Indha Soonly Ke Romba Porundiraaha Arkho Irkho Irkho Badi Nanikranana Appra Silla Chinnachinna Snippets Irkak Anneyanodiya Ah Arivarakal Idi Romba Chinnadu Ana Romba Very Powerful Manthriq Words Adabna Pakikran Pakadala Vayinkala My Advice Is Not To Worry The More You Think Of It The More You Concentrate Upon It And Above All The More You Fear The More You Give A Chance For The Thing To Grow If On The Contrary You Turn Your Attention And Your Interest Elsewhere You Increase The Possibilities Of Cure Bidingraanga Enna Soruranga Badiina Muddalak Kavale Padakkooda Kavale Padadinga Bidingraanga Oru Ushayathapatti Namay Edi Namay Edi Badikkinratho Andha Ushayathapatti Maila Maila Nam Vande Sindi Chom Badiina Adhikondu Baye Pedrathu Idila Panapanna Andha Ushayam Vande Valupper Valupperum Bidingraanga Adhakupadilaha Namulodiya Govanathay Vande Vairaidliyadu Celathan Bidingraanga Namak Edala Interest Rukavala Celathan Badiina Namay Enne Namay Edu Badikkinratho Adu Thaan Agave Ahantruvidum Bidingraanga Adhe Poala Innova Innova Mukyamana Oru Karthi Soluranga Ah Enna Soruranga Na Like The Child Who Does Not Reason And Has No Care Trust Thyself To The Divine That His Will May Be Done The Korandha Number Vitla Aruke Namandha Korandha Kindha Kavaley En Edumey Thariyadu Li Adu Nammanambe Yarukathu Adhe Poala Da Namum Vande Anneyanodiya Arulini Nambe Yenamba Ah Vaar Ah Overnumusum Namba Andha Andha Avrgalodiya Nirerliyam Namvaar Kattukonram Mana Namakondhu Indha Bayam The Kavaley Edumey Airpadathu Especially Ah Indha Idimari Oru Ah Oru Challenging Situation Ala Namakka Namvando Oru Mana Amidiyirakkama Nambikyodo Vaaikayala Irupo Ah Adhe Poala Innova Innova Karthi Soruranga Adhoda Na Mudichikram The Grace And The Help Are Always There For All Who Aspire For Them And Their Power Is Limitless When Received With Faith And Confidence Bidingraanga Anne Thadu The Arulum Andhu Udevyum Vande Yepurudamey Irkikinrathu Yaralam Adhanidan Adhanpal Arvo Muthri Irkikrargaluva Aru Andha Idu Vande Yepurudamey Thangadadaenri Indha Arulum Udevyum Arugalak Kadekkyo Adenamban Nambikyam Nambikyodo Muju Nambikyam Nambikyodo Andha Asikamdiyada Nambikyodo Rundhamna Adunodiya Seyalbada Vande Oru Yellekada Ne Seyalbada Arukav Bidingraanga Their Power Is Limitless When Received With Faith And Confidence So Namak Edutheyav Badiina The Faith And Confidence Sa Vairaidumey Indha Samitla Namakke Ah Kaygadukkaadu Only Faith And Confidence In The Mother So Indha Karthi Avukaetaanga Anala Na Idoda Pagirundu Uggalapagirundukollavurum
Sir Thank You Sir My Request Teliva Solatallan Ninga Romba Elaborata Romba Ajaaha Edutha Sangee Sir Thank You Thank You So Much
Thank You Ninga Keta Thudma Tharunna Illarke Me Vande Indha Samitla Vande Ah Oru Manadu Unarvunile Ella Thim Badikakkudiya Nigirvugala Thaan Namuchutti Nadaakikinrathu So Number Life Divine La Pakikarade Vande Idi Andhumari Oru Negative Influence Vande Oru Counter Pantrathu Thaan Idilame Idi Oru Mayarchi Enanande Andha Negative Forces Counter Panrona Nampa Positive Vai Idimari Ah Seyalbada Galan Namam Maila Maila Edupadano Edupadam Thaan Ada Counter Panamudiyo
Thank You Sir Thank You
Thank You Sir Thank You Sir Come On Allah
Thank You Thank You
Thank You Sir
Thank You
Quite Wonderful Sir Thank You
Thank You Thank You So Idi Agenda La Illa But Avukaetaanga So Motherodiya Tatsimala Andha Prayers La Arthu The Mother Vande Maybe Idilame These Are All Promptings By The Mother Namakka Namay Namavande Oru Uchaga Paditikollavum Nambitikollavum Idila Vande Namlak Udevukuriya Anneyanodiya Mandravartheygal Ipana Mind And Super Mind Vande Ah The Bhavan Vande In The Chapter Chapter Eighteen Nam Pona Chapter La Vande The Divine The Divine Soul Patho Idu Vande Bhavanvanoodiya Ah Eppidi Namble Vai Nadaakipova Celikindraan Pato Badiina Abdi Oru Padi 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 Padiya Namay Namavande Namle Vai Nadaakip Celikindra Ipo The Life Divine Le Edhitto Badiina Ah Number Model Chapter Vande Namapathu Vande Ah Human Aspiration The Human Aspiration La Vande Ah Eppidi Nam Manudanodiya Ah Ellaavidamana Edirpugal Edirundhalum Manudanodiya In Aspiration For Divine Reaching The Divine Realizing The Divine Vande Thotracchaya Nerdhukundey Irkikinrathu Enkara Thakam Sonnaru Irandavu The Materialistic Denial Vande Enna Thaan Vande Indha Purul Mudal Vadikal Vande Maruthaalum Ah Anal Avrulodiya Andha Marupu Vande Oru Yellekutpatthadaive Irkikinrathu Ay Thaandu Sella Badiyavallai Even Andha Marutthalum Kooda The Aanmitthalarkakkudiya Thaeavadada Sil Ushayangalai Ahatru Tharkathu Udeviyaha Irundathu Enre Kuriindar Adhut Vande The Ascetic Refusal Of The Ascetic Patho The Refusal Of The Ascetic La Vande Andha Eppidi Vande Oru Ah Ulagathai Thurandhu Vittu Ulagathai Ulagathai Maruthu Vittu Engo Irkakkudiya Andha Yellekada Ne Irayunarvodu Irupathu Thaan Unmai Appadingrathu Andha Thuraviin Marupu Asit The Refusal Of The Ascetic Adhim Bhavan Vande Eppidi Adhum Adu Adunali Airpadakkudiya Velavigalyum Sonnaru Eppidi Andha Adu Vande Oru Oruburamana Oru Orumugamana Oru Valakshya Thaan Adu Vande Ah Namakku Especially The Namunudiya Naate Poruthavareyum Ah Western Countries Eppidi Materialistic Denial Vande Ah Purulgalipu Oru The Materialistic Prosperity Kudaviyado Angavande Naanma Valakshyadale Idu Vande Number Spirituala Valakshyadano Ana Ingavande The Purul The Life Vande Saaramillaamapoyavittathu Anal Iridhi La Vande Irndemi Avasiyab Bidingraaru The Reality Omnipresent La Vande Ella Thunkapinnadi Vande The Marupugal Ah The Vevervadumana Marupugal Anithakapinnadi The Reality Mayma Iray Mayma Thaan Anithakapinnal Ah Irkikinrathu Enre The Reality Omnipresent La Patho Vande Destiny Of The Individual Enna Sonnart Bhavan Enna Enral Manudanodiya Indha Edarkaha Avan Indha Ulagathil Padakepattan Enral Avan Irayvanay Adayavathu Adu Thaan Avonodiya Destiny Andha Here Inmubumiil Vaarandukundey Irayvanay Adayavathu Adu Destiny Of The Individual La Patho Man In The Universala Idukipatho Badiina Manudanukum Prabanjathukum Enna Uravu Ah Alenna Teliva Kudipadikindar Endal Manudan Prabanjathin Nambirikindran Adu Unmai Anal Indha Prabanjamum Manudanay Nambirikinrathu Edarkaha Enral Indha Manudanin Molamaha Thaan Adu Irayvanay Prabanjam Adayamudiyam Adi Andha Karthi Avaru KuriPit Randar Adhut Andha Ego And Divalities Adu Patho Yedinalavande Manudanodiya Andha Veetchi Unarvunile Veetchi AirPattavu Avan Vande SachiDhananda Enra Oyernelile Irundu Ingayarkakkude Irumyagala VeerKaha VeerDhan Enral Andha Manudanodiya Andha Divided Consciousness Tha Thaan Inkinra Andha Thann Unarvu Ado Oru Edipattanila Adhikadandu Selivadu Adhikadandu Nam SendruViduom Enre AngukuriPit Randar The Methods Of Vedantic Knowledge La Bhavan Enna KuriPit Randarla Nam Vande Namudiyah Arivyalalame The Aim Pulankalai Saarndham Indhulathu Anal The Vedantic Knowledge La Vande The Aim Pulankalai Saara Arivul Adan Molamaha Thaan Avrgal Unmai Kandarinthargal So Idai Kudithu Thaan Bhavan Vande Anga Ah Unmai Galenam Ah Unmai Galenam Vande The Iray Sambandappattamana Unmai Galay Aiyavendum Tirdukullavendum Manal Nam Pulankalai Nambirundhal Namal The Unmai Galay Kandariyamudiyadu Adu Thaan Andha Vedantic Knowledge Methods Of Vedantic Knowledge Patho Appra Idilam Udenjanan Namble Bhavan Bhavan Vande Edenok Aritichen Tharandala SachiDhananda Vino Kadech Aritichen Ra The Pure Existent Ra Enna Adu Thaan Base Pure Existent Enna Adu Adu Thaan Ya Bhaadu Illai Enral The Prabanjamay Kadeyadu Adhut Andha Conscious Force Eppidi Vande The Sachi Sakti Adu Prabanjathinodiya Anaythu Seyalbada Galakum Adu Eppidi Adu Vande Oru Adipadiyaha AmiGinrathu Adhut The Anandam The Delight Of Existence The Problem The Delight Of Existence The Solution Idu Patho Eppidi Anithame Anandam Na Ella Thakum Adipadai The Anandatay Nam Yena Adayam Anubhavikamudiyavallai Enral Nam Andha Ego And The Desire Idirandum Namay Badipathu Na Namal The Anandatay MujuMiyaha Namal Anubhavikamudiyavadilai So SachiDhananda Odilla Aspects Ya Anga Deal Panitara Adhut The SachiDhananda Thannay Velipaditikollavendum Indha Ulagathla Edan Molamaha Velipaditikollavendum Edavuru Sakti Thaeapadikindrathu Andha Sakti Thaan Divine Maya Divine Maya Enkara The Nothing But Super Mind The Divine Maya Maya Vin Molamaha Thaan SachiDhananda Thannay Ulagathil Velipadithi Shristiay Thotravikathu The Lower Maya Adi Thotravikathu So Idu Patho Then Av Bhavan Vande The Super Mind Ka Arit Namay Arit Celikindrar Super Mind Nodiya Ah Moondra Chapter Slim Patho Badiina Eppidi Super Mind As A Creator Anithakum Shristikarthaha Amayavathu The Super Mind Adu Thaan Andha Super Mind As A Creator Enkinder Chapter Nodiya Saaramsam The Super Supreme Truth Consciousness Enkara The Truth Consciousness Thaan Adipadila Adunodiya Super Mind Nodiya Oru 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 Ullamsam Adu Thaan Vande Ella Me Thannay The Real Idea Ah Knowledge Will Idan Molamaha Adunodiya Vedathin Asamsangalana The Brahat Satyam Ritham Idan Moondrin Asamsangalaga Thannay Velipaditikundu Seyalbada Galay Nadaakikinrathu Idu Thaan The Supreme Truth Consciousness La Patho Appra The Triple Status Of The Super Mind Patho Adalagain Adi Elamme Vande Shristi La Super Mind SachiDhananda Irkikinrathu Adhikartthu Divine Maya Ella Me Keer Erakam Divine Maya Divine Maya Kapra Vande Super Mind Super Mind As A Creator Super My The Supreme Truth Consciousness Appra The Triple Status Of The Super Mind La Super Mind Nodiya First Status Vande Orumay Neli Adu Vande SachiDhananda Vinoodiya Nilai Orutti Nilai Adhut The Orumay Neli Irandavu Panmukhaneli Moondraavu Panmukhaneli Adu Thaan Nam Irkakkudiya Andhu Ulagam So The Keer Daring Vandaachi Then The Divine Soul Appidingra Chapter La Vande Super Mind Manudanodiya Anma Vande Keen Neli La Irkikinrathu Anal The Divine Soul Maila La Irkikinrathu Eppidi Manudha Anma Vande The Divine Soul Adi Noke Sella Vendum Adu Adu Vaha Adu Thiruvurumatram Adayavendum Appray Enral Andha Divine Soul Etthaya Tanmyodiyada Adi Irkikinrathu Adi Path Theli Vaha Bhavan KuriPit Thulla Ipe Idi Elamme Vande The Kadasia Path Naal Chapters Idilame Vande Ah Namulodiya Manam Udal Vaarv Idukaparpatha Oru Asamsangal Super Mind Divine Maya The Divine Soul Idilame Patho Badiina Angavande Namulodiya Manam Udal Vaarv Idukalaparpatha Asamsangal Nam Irkakkudiya Nilai Vande Manam Udal Vaarv Saarndha Nilai Ipo Namkak Enna Thonam Badiina Idilam Vande Manam Udal Vaarv Idukaparpatha Nellagala Irkikinrathu Manam Udal Vaarv Enkindra Moondra Nellagala Vaarakkudiya Nam Yevaru Etthaya Asamsangali Nam Adayamudiyam Idilam Vande Oru Ah Oru Kanavu Boil Irkikinrathu Oru Nadaimarekku Obadha Oru Ushayamaha Thondrichinrathu Enam Manudha Nenakke Kodo Anal Avaru Illai Enna Andha Pinva Idukpinadivar Chapter Sallame Irakam Mind Mind Path Thesorurare Appra Life Life Path Thesorurar Bhavan Appra Death Desire Incapacity Idi Elam Vande Abdi Yaring Vande Namulodiya Andha Oyer Neli Yon The Keen Neliyam Bhavan Vande Inaythikindrar Appri Otthumathumapatho Badiina Number Vande Nam Irkakkudiya Indha Nilai Vande The Mail Neli Oru Sambandappadaadu Nilai Illai Adu Thaan Ninga Bhavan KuriPitikindrathu Indha Chapter La Vande Manam Eppidi Indha Oyer Nellagalodu Oyer Nellagalodu Sambandappatta One Rahay Irkikinrathu Adu Vande Oru Tanithu Wedappadavillai Indha Karthu Thaan The Chapter La Solikindrar Idu Vande Oru Chinnavu Arima KuriPit Imma Ullapola Number The Upanishads Pakikringla Sir Sundar Sir Pakikringla
Yes Sir Titri Upanishad Chapter Three Verse Four He Discovered That Mind Was The Brahman Mind And Brahman Explanation When Bruhu Son Of Varuna Approached His Father In Order To Know The Eternal The Brahman He Was Asked To Concentrate His Consciousness And Find Out That From Which All Things Are Born By Which All Are Sustained And Into Which They All Pass In Their Ending He Discovered That Annam Matter Is Brahman Asked To Concentrate Further He Found Out That Prana Life Is Brahman Urged To Probe Still More He Discovered That Manas Mind Is Brahman It Is Through The Mind That All Comes Into The Realm Of Experience In The Mind That All Are Held In Contact Into The Layers Of The Mind That They Recede At The Termination Of Their Encounter The Mind Is A Special Formulation Of Consciousness द माइंड इस अ स्पेशल फॉर्मुलेशन ऑफ कॉन्शसनेस विच इस डिवाइन इट इस अ डिविएशन ऑफ द डिवाइन माइंड विच इस अ स्पेशल एक्शन ऑफ द ट्रुथ कॉन्शसनेस इन इट्स अप्रेहंडिंग मोमेंट इन विच द कॉन्शसनेस रिगोर्ड्स इट्स वोन वर्किंग आस अ पोसेसर एंड विटनेस द माइंड इस अ स्पेशल एक्शन ऑफ द मैनिफेस्टिंग कॉन्शसनेस इन फाइनिटाइजिंग द इन्फिनिट आत डी बैक ऑफ द ऑपरेशंस देर इस ऑलवेज द सपोर्टिंग पॉइस ऑफ द सुपर माइंड इन द कॉन्टेक्स्ट ऑफ स्पिरिचुअल एवल्यूशन ऑफ कॉन्शसनेस द माइंड इस नॉट तू बी कैंसल्ड और डिस्ट्रॉय बट तू बी एलिवेटेड इनटू इट्स वोन हायर टर्म इट इस अ चैनल बिटवीन लिविंग मैटर एंड द हायर वैराइटीज ऑफ द स्पिरिट इट रिफ्लेक्स द हायर नॉलेज इन द लोयर नेचर अकॉर्डिंग तू द प्योरिटी ऑफ इट्स फंक्शनिंग इन एसेंस द माइंड इस नियरर ब्राह्मण इन द ग्रेडेशन ऑफ मैनिफेस्टेशन देन मैटर और द लाइफ प्रिंसिपल माइंड इस नो प्रोडक्ट ऑफ माया बट अ सबोर्डिनेट वर्किंग ऑफ द ट्रुथ माइंड
थैंक यू सर थैंक यू
थैंक यू सर
इंदर ताईत्री उपनेश्यत वंदु माइंड ही डिसकवर्ड डेट माइंड वास अ ब्राह्मण मुखिम अंबर नाम गवनिक वंदिया ओर कर्त्य एन्ना अप्पडिना नम्म मनम इन्नबद ओर स्पेशल फॉर्मुलेशन ऑफ कॉन्शसनेस उनर्व नेलीन ओर प्रत्येवमान ओर अमैप्पी इन्नर कुरपिट अपडिकिन्द अंदर स्पेशल फॉर्मुलेशन ऑफ फॉर्मुलेशन ऑफ कॉन्शसनेस अप्पडिंगरदे प्रत्येवमान उनर्व नेले इन्नबद यदे सार्दत इन्नराल अदु इरयम सत्ते सार्द इंदर आदु वंदु मार्गपट्ट इरकेन्द्र अदु इरय इरय मनम डिवाइन माइंड अदलीर्दु नाम इरक्क कोडिया द मनम वंदु मार्गपट्ट इरकेन्द्र पादिमार इरकेन्द्र द इट्स अ डिविएशन अदु यदनाल अप्पडिया अवार यह पट्टा यह पट्ट इरकेन्द्र इन्नराल अदु ट्रुथ कॉन्शसनेस अदु नोडिया सैल्बाट इन्नाल अवार यह पट्टुल्लद द नाम इरक्कनवे पातो सुपर माइंड अदु नोडिया मूंड निले हल ल पातो ओनर कॉन्प्रेहेंडिंग कॉन्शसनेस इरण्डाव द अप्रेहंडिंग कॉन्शसनेस कॉन्प्रेहेंडिंग कॉन्शसनेस अप्पडिना अनितमी तन्नुल अडक्याद अदरक पुरत अदरक पुरतिल एदुमे कड़ेयाद द अप्रेहंडिंग कॉन्शसनेस अप्पडिंगरदे तन्मुन तन्मुन्ने ओनरे वायत अदु पार्किन्द्र इंदर इन इट्स अप्रेहंडिंग मोमेंट इन विच द कॉन्शसनेस रिगोर्ड्स इट्स वोन वर्किंग मन्निदन ओडिया निले एप्पड़ि इन्नराल द अप्रेहंडिंग कॉन्शस अप्रेहंडिंग मोमेंट ल तन्नुडिया वेलिया ये अदु पार्किन्द्र एप्पडियन्नराल तन्नुडिया वेलिक्की ताने सोंदकारण आकुम अदेस समय त्रम ताने साच्य आकुम अदु पार्किन्द्र इदु दान इंग वित्यास द ट्रुथ कॉन्शसनेस नोडिया द थर्ड लेवल अंदर लेवल वंदु इंद द कॉन्शसनेस वेले साइकिन्द्र इन्नोर मुखिमान कर्त्य नाम गवनिक वंदिदे मनम इन्नबद इंदर विलिप्पड़म उनर्व नेलीन ओर ओर सिरप्पान ओर सैल्बाड एप्पडिपट्ट एप्पडिपट्ट ओर सिरप्पान सैल्बाड इन्नराल अंदर उनर्व नेले येन्ना साइकिन्द्र इन्नराल आनंतमा इरक्क कोडिया ओनरे ओर कुरपिट्ट वडिव कुल अदु बडिवमेकुंड्र अदु दान इंद सिरप्पान सैल स्पेशल एक्शन ऑफ द मैनिफेस्टिंग कॉन्शसनेस इन फाइनिटाइजिंग द इन्फिनिट इन्नराल द इन्फिनिट आनंतमा इरक्क कोडिया द आनंतमा वे इर्दाल द ओलाकतिल सैल्बडमुड़ियाद इन्ना द ओलाकतिल इरक्क कोडिया द एल्लामी ओर वडिवत कुल कुरपिट्ट वडिवत कुल सैल्बडवदे सैल्बडवाय सो मन्निदन ओडिया सिरप्पान अंदर सैल एन्ना इन्नराल अदु वंदु यदन ओडिया सैल्बाट इन विलयवाह इरकेन्द्र इन्नराल उनर्व नेले तने इंद प्रबंधत्त ल विलिप्पितिकोल्लुम बोर्ड आनंतमान ओनरल इर्दु ओर कुरपिट्ट एल्लेकुल तने अलविरकुल विलिप्पित विलिप्पितिकोल्लुम बोर्ड अदु नोडिया सैल्बाड आकत्तन मनम अमेकिन्द्र मन्निदन ओडिया सैल्बाड मेहरपुरतिल यवार इर्दालुम अदु नोडुक अदुक पिन्नाडी वंदु ओर सपोर्टिंग पॉइस यदु वंदु अदुक अदुक ओर पादुका पाक ओर आरवड़ी पाह इरकेन्द्र इन्नराल अदु दान सुपर माइंड अदु नम्म के तेरिल अनादु दान पिन्नाडियर पिन्नाडियर इर्दु इंद मन्निदन ओडिया वेलिगल अनितमी अदु दान वंदु ओर ओर उरुदिया आकुम ओर उरुदुनया आकुम इरकेन्द्र इरण्डाव द द नाम पार्किट नंबर एल्लामी वंदु परिणाम वलेक्षील दान नम्रडे वार्की नम्रडे वार्की मात्र उल्ला अनित जीवियंगल ओडिया वार्कीम अदु परिणाम वलेक्षीक उत्पत्त दान अमेंदिरिकिन्द्र एल्लामी परिणाम वलेक्षील तने तने अरिया मलिये येड़पडितिकुंड वार्किन्द्रण इंदर आन्मीक परिणाम वलेक्षील यदु उन्मय ले परिणाम वलेक्षी अड़ेकिन्द्र इन्नराल द उनर्व नेले दान परिणाम वलेक्षी इन्नराल आन्मीक रीदिया हा नाम कुरपिड़वद उनर्व नेले इल परिणाम वलेक्षी अदु वरुम फिसिकल मेंटल वाइट लंदर लेवल ल कड़ेयाद आन्मीक अलविल परिणाम वलेक्षी अदु दान इंग भगवान कुरपिड़वद स्पिरिचुअल एवल्यूशन ऑफ कॉन्शसनेस इंद परिणाम वलेक्षी नोडिया इंद सैल्बाट लवंदे मन्निदन ओडिया पंग एन्ना पातो अप्पडिना मन्निद नाम ओर पुरंदल लवो अदे नाम ओदिक्कीवेडवो मुड़ियाद परिणाम वलेक्षील अदु कुंद ओर मुखिमान ओर पंग इरकेन्द्र द एन्ना पंग इन्नराल मन्निद नाम अदु नोडिया ओयर नेले के नाम उयर्त वेंडम अनाल अदु दान द परिणाम वलेक्षील मन्निदन ओडिया पंग मन्निद इप्परक्क कोडे निले इर्दु ओयर नेले के नाम वार्ग तवेंडम अड़तु वंदु मत्र निले हल ओर ओप्पिड कैयल मनम वंदु ब्राह्मण का अरिहाम इल इरकेन्द्र इन्नर कुरपिट अपडियन्द मैटर इरकेन्द्र द लाइफ प्रिंसिपल रुक इदलाम विड यदु ब्राह्मण का अरिहाम इल इरकेन्द्र इन्नराल मनम अदलाल इंग मुखिमाह कुरपिट अपडिवद एन्ना इन्नराल
Brahman, the reality is one. It has no parts. It is always whole, impossible. But it is not bound to its state of oneness. It emanates many out of its infinitude of being. But on that account, it suffers no diminution. It reminds what it has always been. Take out the full from the full and the full remains, says the scripture. The many that issue from the one are not so many parts detached from that. Each of the many is the one holy. Any number of the many do not detract from the unity of the one. The several formations of Brahman that constitute the universe are not so many divided portions of the sole reality. It is only in appearance that the forms are divided from each other. And the indivisible Brahman looks as if segmented. In truth, the diversity is constituted by the one in its various deployments. The closest analogy is ether, which cannot be divided and yet constitutes the substance of the multiplicity of forms. The one is the all and each of the all. Each is not only in the one but is the one. The one is our entire. Source, legends, indeed, life divine, Sri MP Pandit.
Thank you very much sir, thank you. Thank you sir. In this Gitaanodaya, we are talking about, what is the difference? Brahman is one. Whether it is a self-sufficient or not, it is one. It is not a part, it is a part, it is a part. In this, in this chapter, Divine Soul, we saw, Divine Soul is such. Divine Soul, every part is a part. If you see a part of a person, every one, every part is a part. If you see it as a part, this is the truth. Brahman is indivisible, you cannot divide it. If you see it as a part, even if you see it in different shapes, it is one. This is in our SAVATRI session, we also saw, the book to World's Tale, we saw. The integer of the spirit's perfect sum that equates the unequal all to the equal one. This is what we saw. Then Madam also explained. Whether or not you ask, its fullness is less. Even if you see it as a part, it is a part. That is why, the part is one. In these scriptures, the parts are changed one by one. That is why, the Brahman, the Brahman cannot be seen, how can it be seen? It is segmented, part by part. However, the truth is, that one is in different shapes. You have forgotten it, however, it is also in different shapes. What can I say about this? We will see this, this truth. The ether, ether is a small particle, the subtlest form, that is, ether. Why do we need to understand it? In a small, 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 a small particle is in a small, 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 particle. This is a small particle. Ether is a small particle, Akash or ether, this is all. The next level is air, air. The next level is fire, light. The next is water, earth, ground. The earth, this is all, the earth, this is a grass form, a small, small, small particle. The texture goes up, comes down, this Akash, air, ether, this level, it is like a tree. A small, 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 a small, small, small particle, it is seen. However, in the small particle, the subtlest form is ether. That is why, the other four elements are inside it. That is why, this is, this is, this is, this is, how do you learn this? Whether Brahman is one, even if you see it in the panmohit scriptures, even if it is, it is inside Brahman. This is what you are learning. The one is the all and each of the all. One is the self-sufficient, the small, small, small particles. This is what this Gitaanodaya, in this, there is a God, the Lord of the heavens. So, in these two, in these two chapters, we saw, these are connected. If you say, if you say, in this chapter, he has learned these two. His Lord of the heavens, his Upanishad, Veda, Gita, these two have direct relevance. When we read them, we can understand them. So, paragraph one, comma, number.
Yes sir, paragraph one. The conception which we have so far been striving to form is that of the essence only of the supramental life, which the divine soul possesses securely in the being of Sachitananda, but which the human soul has to manifest in this body of Sachitananda, formed here into the mold of a mental and physical living. But so far as we have been able yet to envisage this supramental existence, it does not seem to have any connection or correspondence with life as we know it. Life active between the two terms of our normal existence, the two firmaments of mind and body, it seems rather to be a state of being, a state of consciousness, a state of active relation and mutual enjoyment such as disembodied souls might possess and experience in a world without physical forms. A world in which differentiation of souls had been accomplished but not differentiation of bodies. A world of active and joyous infinities, not of form-imprisoned spirits. Therefore, it might reasonably be doubted whether such a divine living would be possible with this limitation of bodily form and this limitation of form-imprisoned mind and form-trammelled force which is what we now know as existence.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you sir.
Now, the super mind, I don't know, we saw, three chapters, super mind. It is the spirit of God, it is the spirit. The super mind, the creator, the supreme truth consciousness, the triple status of the super mind. This is the inner spirit of the super mind. Whether it is created, whether it is in the mind, the mind is in a clear direction. The divine soul is in the same direction. How is the spiritual path? Chapter fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we saw, fourteen, chapter fourteen, we saw. When we see this, we will see something, what is it? In this, three, in this super mind, divine soul, we saw this. There are no particles, in this plane, there are no particles. Are there? No particles. The particles are seen in this world. This is where the parts are seen, the particles are seen. This manam, uddal, vahv, this is where the number is, this earth is seen. However, until now, in the last four, five chapters, all are in the same direction, all are in the same direction. God, you are asking a common question, he asked, what is it? Is there a certain pattern, there are no particles? Otherwise, we are in the same direction, we are in the same direction. However, we are in the same direction, manam, uddal, vahv, together, the particles are seen. If we are in this, whether we are in the same direction, inner spirit, vahv, is happiness. This question is for everyone, a very good question. That is why, God asked. This is what we are in, the same direction, there are no particles, there are no particles. When we see this, we are in the same direction, manam, uddal, manam, together, we are seeing. If we are in this, whether we are in this, whether we are in this inner spirit, is happiness. This is what God asked. This is what God asked in the first paragraph. Let us see the explanation.
Explanation. We have seen in the previous chapter, the nature of the divine soul. We have seen the essence of the supramental life in which the divine soul is securely placed in the being of Sachitananda. The human soul in its ascent towards divine soul has to manifest the supramental life in this body of Sachitananda. It has to be formed here into the mold of a mental and physical living. But so far, what we have conceived of as supramental life has no connection with our life as we know it. Our life is active between two terms, the two realms of our normal existence, that is, our mind and body.
Thank you.
The conception which we have so far been striving to form is that of the essence only of the supramental life which the divine soul possesses securely in the being of Sachitananda, but which the human soul has to manifest in this body of Sachitananda, formed here into the mold of a mental and physical living.
In the divine soul, we saw in the previous chapters. In the supramental life, this is the essence. Whether, inner spirit, you, Sachitananda, in his condition, a small, 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 in his condition, is the essence. Because, the supramental life, whether, it is the divine soul, whether, this is the one of Sachitananda, it is securely placed, God used it. It is a small, 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 particles, it is inside. Whether it is a small, small, small particles, it is inside. Sachitananda, a small, small, small particles, the supramental life, the divine soul, is inside. However, the mind, we saw in the previous chapters, we saw, our nature is, the human soul is, the divine soul is, must change, that is, it is the truth. When we see the nature of the mind, the mind, the deep life, supramental life, that is, the human soul, the mind, Sachitananda, that is, it is a small, small, small particle, it is needed. If you see it as a small, 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 whether it is, whether it is, whether it is a small particle, it is needed. Our manam, our uddal, together, this is needed. What is God asking? The mind, the divine mind, must change, in the divine mind. When the divine mind changes, when the deep life is started, that is, Sachitananda, that is, it is needed. If Sachitananda is a small particle, whether it is a small particle, whether it is a small particle, it is needed. However, until now, we saw, supramental life, deep life, deep life, life, is, that is, we are seeing, nothing is possible. Because, our life, in this, two conditions, that is, it is needed. What are two conditions? One is mind, manam, the second is body, uddal. These two conditions, this supramental life, until now, we saw, it is not. That is why, God asked. It is not, if it is not, how is this happiness? How can our manam, uddal, this particle, Sachitananda, can be done? This is what you are asking. This is the next part of explanation.
What is it, Master?
I am asking, Madam, please.
Whatever we have learnt so far regarding the supramental life seems to be a state of consciousness. We perceive it to be state of active relation and mutual enjoyment possessed by the souls without body. We perceive them to be experienced in a world without physical forms. It is a world where differentiation of souls had been achieved but not differentiation of bodies. It is world of active and joyous infinities that the spirit is not imprisoned in forms. Now, in the background of our present existence, we may doubt whether divine life would be possible with our limitation of, limitation of bodily forms, form-imprisoned mind and form-restricted force. Thank you sir.
The question of the mind is, what is God asking? God can tell us, how much divine wisdom, if the mind, this condition, that is, it is needed. It is a precaution. We will see. All are supranormal experiences. They have many supra-normal experiences on their spiritual life. So, supra-normal experiences are there for mankind. There is a chapter where God is asking us to think about it. He asked us to think about how many supra-normal experiences there are for mankind. It has to be validated by his physical senses. Only then will they have a sense of life. Otherwise, they will have a problem. God said to us Earth is his footing. Our footing is the world. We cannot solve anything without this. Even if we have experienced a life experience, there is no significance for any of these. This is what God said to us. He only says that we should see supra-mental life. We should see the consciousness of the super mental. When we are there, the anxiety is not there. We should see it. But the way we are living is under the pressure of anxiety. In this state, how supra-mental life is a source of happiness? This question is asked by God in a simple manner. He asked us to think about it. It seems rather to be a state of being. That is the supra-mental and the consciousness. It seems rather to be a state of being, a state of consciousness, a state of active relation and mutual enjoyment such as disembodied souls might possess. Disembodied souls are beings, but they are not spirits. The spirits who are there are the ones who are experiencing the experience. That is what God is asking us. Active relation and mutual enjoyment such as disembodied souls might possess and experience in a world without physical forms, a world in which differentiation of souls had been accomplished but not differentiation of bodies, a world of active and joyous infinities, not of form imprisoned spirits. This is what God is asking us. In the world of beings, in the previous chapter, God was asking us about divine souls. There is a differentiation. There is no division. There is no differentiation. Differentiation is that one entity is seen by others. Some are seen by others, some are seen by others. That is why it is differentiated. There is no division, but there is differentiation. There is a differentiation. But there is no differentiation of bodies. There is only a body. There is no anxiety, there is no anxiety. But when we see it, we are experiencing it. How is happiness? This is what God is asking us. The main thing is that the spirit is not imprisoned in forms. Here we see the spirit is in the body. But there is not. So, when we see this in the background, we see a dimension. The divine world has limitations. Limitations of bodily forms. The same way, our mind is not perfected. Form imprisoned mind. The same way, our self is a self. That is also the body. In this state, who is the source of happiness? Because we see the supra-mental life, there is not. The spirit is not imprisoned in forms. There is no anxiety. If we are here, we are free. So, God asked us to ask a question about who is the source of happiness? The divine world, this land, who is the source of happiness? This is what God asked us. There is no other explanation.
Hello?
Yes.
We have all read Satchita Ananda. But do we have a form of Satchita Ananda?
Sir, sir?
Do we have a form of Satchita Ananda? We are all learning Satchita Ananda.
We are asking about the form of Satchita Ananda.
You are asking about the form of Satchita Ananda?
We are all learning the form of Satchita Ananda. Do we have the Satchita Ananda form? Anxiety?
Satchita Ananda is not a place of anxiety. It is a level of consciousness. That is what God is asking us. Until now, the place of anxiety is Satchita Ananda. The way we are here is the place of anxiety. There is no place of Satchita Ananda. It is the same place of Satchita Ananda. Anxiety is not a place of anxiety.
As Sir is asking, it is the form of Satchita Ananda.
Sure.
We are not realizing it. He is asking for the form, but he himself is Satchita Ananda.
Yes, yes.
This is a story.
That is why I am telling you something. A doctor said that the patients who go to him quickly get cured. Even if they have a disease, they get cured. So, they are asking the doctor, what is your secret? Your eyes are very quick. They are asking what is your secret? He said, I will not tell you. Satchita Ananda, why did you wear this? Why did you look at your true image? Why did you forget your true image? I will talk to the patient. The patient will remember the pain. If he is behind me, he will look at Satchita Ananda. I will talk to him. And Satchita Ananda will help me. That is what he said. Alok Pandya was sharing this incident.
Great, sir.
So, we are all the Satchita Ananda's image. We do not know.
Thank you.
Madam, you said something.
This is a story.
Yes.
A story.
Paragraph two, Pala Mubli.
Yes, sir. Paragraph two. In fact, we have striven to arrive at some conception of that supreme infinite being, conscious force and self delight, of which our world is a creation and our mentality a perverse figure. We have tried to give ourselves an idea of what this divine Maya may be, this truth consciousness, this real idea by which the conscious force of the transcendent and universal existence conceives, forms and governs the universe, the order, the cosmos of its manifested delight of being. But we have not studied the connections of these four great and divine terms with the three others with which our human experience is alone familiar, mind, life and body. We have not scrutinized this other and apparently undivine Maya, which is the root of all our striving and suffering, or seen how precisely it develops out of the divine reality or the divine Maya. Until we have done this, till we have woven the missing cords of connection, our world is still unexplained to us and the doubt of a possible unification between that higher existence and this lower life has still a basis. We know that our world has come forth from Satchita Ananda and subsists in his being. We conceive that he dwells in it as the enjoyer and knower, Lord and Self. We have seen that our dual terms of sensation, mind, force, being can only be representations of his delight, his conscious force, his divine existence. But it would seem that they are actually so much the opposite of what he really and supernally is that we cannot, while dwelling in the cause of these opposites, cannot, while contained in the lower triple term of existence, attain to the divine living. We must either exalt this lower being into that higher status or exchange body for that pure existence, life for that pure condition of conscious force, sensation and mentality for that pure delight and knowledge which live in the truth of the spiritual reality. And must not this mean that we abandon all earthly or limited mental existence for something which is its opposite? Either for some pure state of the spirit or else for some world of the truth of things, if such exists, or other worlds, if such exist, of divine bliss, divine energy, divine being? In that case, the perfection of humanity is elsewhere than in humanity itself. The summit of its earthly evolution can only be a fine apex of dissolving mentality whence it takes the great leap either into formless being or into worlds beyond the reach of embodied mind.
Thank you, Ermita, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is a big paragraph. The main thing is what God is saying about the three elements of Satchita Ananda. One side of Satchita Ananda is the super mind, truth, consciousness, divine Maya. These are the same things. Super mind, truth, consciousness, divine Maya, real idea. These are the same meanings. One side is the three elements of Satchita Ananda. The super mind, these four elements. Another side is the mind, life and body. This is one side. We know that divine Maya is the source of the world. If there is no universe, there is no universe. In Satchita Ananda, who is the creator of divine Maya? Who is the creator of divine Maya? We know all of this. The things we are experiencing are asking about the undivine Maya. The undivine Maya is the mind, life, body. We do not know until now. Who is in the divine Maya? Who is in the undivine Maya? Who is thinking of it? How is the divine Maya? We need to know this. That is what God is saying. Before we know this, we cannot understand the world. Not only that, we can see the higher existence. We can see the lower life. Whether anyone is experiencing it? Is it a source of happiness? We have a wrong answer. If the answer is that who is in the undivine Maya is thinking of it, we cannot understand the world. The second is the way we are experiencing it. We are thinking about it. When we see this, we have choices. One is that we must live our own life. Or there are things related to the mind. Existence, consciousness, Satchita Ananda, the super mind. This is the place of the body. We need to change this. We need to change this. We need to leave it. This is an option. We need to change this. In this state, in the end of the mind, his body is not able to do anything. We only want the body. This is a different issue. We do not have a clue. Because our life is that we do not change our body. Our mind is not able to change it. That is why we need to change it. Changing this is not possible. This is what God is asking us. If we change this, we will fail. What do we think? Perfection is not available for mankind. We will fail to change this. This is the explanation. It is a big paragraph. The meaning of this is that God's arguments, the answers to the questions of God, are all in this paragraph. Read it, madam.
Read it, sir.
Read it, read it.
We took some effort to understand the supreme infinite being, conscious force and self delight, Satchita Ananda. Our world is a creation of Satchita Ananda and our mind is its perverse figure. We also tried to understand what this divine Maya, this true consciousness, this real idea is. We know that by divine Maya, the conscious force of the transcendent and the universal existence conceives, forms and governs the universe. But we have not studied the connections of these four divine terms, existence, conscious, consciousness force, bliss and the divine Maya, the truth, the truth consciousness with our body, mind and life. We have not studied this apparently undivine Maya, the world of our body, mind and life, which is the root of our struggle and suffering. We have not seen precisely how it develops out of the divine Maya. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam. Thank you.
What God is asking us is that we have not studied the connections of these four great divine terms. The four great divine terms, what God is asking us is Satchita Ananda. This is a big one. The fourth is truth consciousness. There is no divine Maya, there is no super mind, real idea. These are the same Divine Maya, the truth consciousness, real idea, super mind. These are the same things. So, this is the four great divine terms. Satchita Ananda, super mind, there is no truth consciousness or divine Maya.
We have not studied the connections of these four great and divine terms with the three others with which our human experience is alone familiar, mind, life and body. We have not scrutinized this other and apparently undivine Maya.
God is asking us to understand this. Apparently, undivine Maya is what God is asking us. We know it. We know it. We know it. That is why God is very careful.
Apparently, undivine Maya, which is the root of all our striving and suffering, or seen how precisely it develops out of the divine reality or the divine Maya.
In the previous chapters, we saw that Satchita Ananda is the creator of divine Maya. The same way, the world is the creator of divine Maya. Our mind is the creator of divine Maya. The mind is a perverse figure. It is the mind that is changed. It is the creator of divine Maya. But it is a perverse figure. The super mind, we saw. Super mind, divine Maya, truth, consciousness. Divine Maya is a conscious force. It is a self. Who is the self? The conscious force of Satchita Ananda. This is divine Maya. The saints have experienced this. This is the creator of divine Maya. Divine Maya is the creator of the saints. We saw this. But what we are seeing, God is asking us. What we are seeing, God is asking us. How are the four divine terms, the four elements of the saints? Existence, consciousness, force, bliss, Satchita Ananda. Divine Maya, divine Maya, there is no truth consciousness. This is the four. The four, how do we change our body? We do not see this. There are four elements. Satchita Ananda, divine Maya, our body. The three and the four are the same. The same way, who is in the world of divine Maya? Apparently, the undivine Maya is the creator of divine Maya. It is not. It is the undivine Maya. How is divine Maya? We do not know. Because the undivine Maya is the source of our bodies. We should be here. This is the reason why our friends, our friends are here. If anyone in this undivine Maya, in this divine Maya, is coming, we do not know. If we are in this, we should know that we can live in this world. This is what God is telling us. Where is the light? Part of explanation.
Sir, what I feel, the only thing, we started in Saiti Upanishad, where everything is Brahman. If we are holding to that confidently, the only thing will appear to whatever being said. And everything is Brahman. That must be understood, perhaps.
No, no. That we are not doing.
Because of this, we feel unconscious.
Correct. That is, we are in ignorance. We are in ignorance. We are in ignorance. We are in ignorance. We do not know that we are in ignorance. If we are in this, we do not have any problems. That is the truth. We do not know. That is the reason. But we cannot know. If we are in ignorance, we cannot know. Mind, divided consciousness. We cannot know until we are here. It is only through God that we are told. If we are in ignorance, when we are in a deep level, we do not know anything. There is only one. When we say that we are in ignorance, we are in a deep level. If we are in ignorance, we are in a ego. This is the ego. We cannot change this. That is the reason. That is why we are in this.
Thank you, sir.
The next part of explanation, okay?
Read it, sir.
Read it. Read it, madam.
Read it, madam. Till we tie the missing knot of connection between our body, mind, and life, the lawyer with the Satchita Ananda and the divine Maya, the higher, the world will remain unexplained to us. The doubt regarding their unification will always have a basis. We know that the world is the manifestation of Satchita Ananda and is supported in his being. He dwells in it as the enjoyer and knower lord. In our dual status, what we experience as sensation, mind, force, being, are only the representations of his delight, his conscious force, his divine existence. But what we experience here seems actually the opposite of what he really is in his superior status. We find ourselves so much in contrast to the divine qualities that it seems. We cannot attain to the divine life while living in our body, mind, and life. Thank you, sir.
This is the reason why we should be here. This is the reason why God is telling us. This is a very important thing. And till we have done this, till we have done this, we should see this. The four, the same words, we should be here. We should change this. Till we have woven the missing cords of connection, our world is still unexplained to us, and the doubt of a possible unification between that higher existence and this lower life has still a basis. The missing knots, what God is saying, missing connections. We should be here. We should be here. We should be here. This is the truth consciousness, divine Maya. These are higher. These are higher. The body, mind, and soul are clear. We should change this. We cannot change this. To change this, to unify this, we should be here. We should be here. We should be here. We do not have this. We should be here. Because of this, we do not know. We know that the world is the Satchita Ananda's light. That is why this world supports us. Why does this world support us? Because of this world. The Satchita Ananda is a path. As an enjoyer and knower, God is telling us. But in our split level, divided consciousness, in this split level, we should change this. What is this sensation? Sensation is, if we change this, we should change this. As such, we should change this. As such, we should change this. We should change this. This is the split. We do not know this. We should change this. The same words, we should change this. There is pure goodness, evil is not seen. There is pure bliss, suffering is seen. There is truth, false goodness is seen. There is immortality, death is seen. We should change this. If we are in this, we should change this. We should change this. We should change this. Next. Next part of explanation.
Read it, sir.
Read it, madam, please.
Thank you. What are the options available to us? We must either raise our lower being to a higher status or we must exchange our body for the pure existence, life for the pure condition of conscious force, sensation and mentality for the pure delight and knowledge. In other words, we must exchange our dualistic lawyer nature to the higher nature, which lives in the truth of spiritual reality. What does it really mean? It means we must abandon our earthly, limited mental existence in favor of something which is its opposite. It may be either some pure state of the spirit or else some world of the truth of things if it really exists or some other worlds of divine bliss, divine energy, divine being if they really exist at all. If that is the case, it gives the impression that the perfection of humanity exists elsewhere than in the humanity itself. The summit of the earthly evolution can only lead to the dissolving mentality. The mind either takes a great leap into formless being or into worlds beyond the reach of the bodily mind. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, madam, thank you. This is the ascetic refusal, refusal of the ascetic. We saw in the third chapter, Thuraviya Marup. Thuraviya Marup, what is it? We should observe this. Thuraviya Marup. We saw this. We should change this. We should change this. Then we can reach the higher. That is why they are here. That is why this paragraph is here. We should buy the two main truths. We should change this. Because we should be here. We should change this. If we are in this, we should change this. We must either exalt, exalt is to live. We must either exalt this lower being into that higher status or exchange body for that pure existence, life for that pure condition of conscious force, sensation and mentality for that pure delight and knowledge, which live in the truth of spiritual reality. All are Satchita Ananda's words. Conscious force, pure delight, truth of spiritual reality, pure existence. All are Satchita Ananda's words. We should change this. We should change this. The second truth is, if we are in this, what God is saying, in that case, the perfection of humanity is elsewhere than in humanity itself. This is the reason why we are in ignorance. The summit of its earthly evolution can only be a fine apex of dissolving mentality whence it takes the great leap either into formless being or into worlds beyond the reach of embodied mind. How? If we are in this, we should change this. One is that we should change this. Or, we should change the pure existence. We should change this. Or, we should change this. We should change this. The conscious force, pure condition of Satchita Ananda. We should change this. As such, we should change this. We should change this. Exchange. We cannot change this. We should change this. Sensation and mentality for the pure delight. We should change this. If we change this, we should change this. What is the meaning of this? We should change this. We must abandon our earthly, limited mental existence. We should change this. We should change this. We should change this. We should change this. As such, we should change this. These are all the same words. We should change this. We should change this. If such exists. If such exists, we should change this. We should change this. We should change this. This, this impression, how it is, how it is, we should change this. We should change this. The perfection of humanity. We should change this. We should change this. We should change this. As such, the summit of earthly evolution. This is the point of the point. We should change this. 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 Then you can reach the higher state. In this, one mind, a great leap into formless being. We should change this. We should change this. As such, we should change this. 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 This is Thuraviya Marup. This is the reason why this body, this worldly existence, this mind, we should change this. We should change this. This ascetic approach. That is what God is saying. We should change this. 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 That is what God is saying.
Go down, sir.
Yes, sir.
The third paragraph. If that is the case, third paragraph. That is the key. It gives the impression that the perfection of humanity exists elsewhere than the humanity itself. Some other worlds of divine bliss, divine energy, divine being, if they really exist at all. Suppose this is appropriate. You are in this. What is trying to say in this sentence?
This is, this perfection, happiness, all are, we should change this. What is the correlation? What is the related thinking? We should change this. 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 அது எங்கியோ இருக்கின்றது, அப்படிங்கிற நிலைதான். புரியுதான் அவங்களுக்கு. இப்போது நம்மளோட இருக்குற நிலையை விட்டிட்டு எங்கியோ போனும் அப்படிங்கிறப்போ, என்ன நினைக்கிறோம் அப்படின்னா? நம்பக்கிட்ட ஸ்லூशன் இல்லைங்க, போருத்தான் நம்ப இதெல்லாம் விட்டிட்டு வேறெங்கியோ கொரோ. இல்லையா? நம்பக்கிட்ட ஒரு சின்ன ஒரு சொல்ல, நமக்கு வந்து ஒரு ஒரு problem இருக்கு, ஒரு face பண்றோ. அந்த நம்ப பிராபில்ட் தான் நம்ப வந்து நம்ப நம்மளால மொய்ந்து வரிக்கை ட்ரை பண்ணி பார்க்கிறோம். நம்ப கத்து தீரு வந்து கிடைக்க மாட்டேங்கிறது நம்மளுக்கு. நம்ம என்ன பண்றோம் உடனே, இன்னூர்தட்டப்பை அந்த பிராபில்ட்டிக்கு ஸ்லூஸன் கேட்கறோம் நம்ப.
அது correct.
இன்னூர்தட்ட, இன்னூர்தட்ட நம்ப இன்னூர்தட்ட வந்து நம்ப வந்து அந்த pressure, இன்னூர்தட்ட வந்து நம்ப வந்து அதுக்கு ஸ்லூஸன் கேட்கும், கேட்கும் திறக்க நம்ப ட்ரை பண்ணும்பொழுது, என்ன வந்து முடிவாகியது என்றால், அந்த பிரச்சனைக்கு, அந்த பிராபில்ட்க்கான ஸ்லூஸன் நம்பக்கிட்ட இல்லைங்கிறது பூர்த்தியாயிடுது. இல்லையா? அதனாலதான் நம்ப இன்னூர்தட்டப்பை கேட்கறோம். இல்லையா? அதேபோலதான் இந்த humanity ல பேஸ் பண்ணக்கூடிய பிரச்சனைகளுக்கு எல்லாத்துக்குமே தீரு வந்து உண்மையிலே எங்க இருக்கப்படுத்தினா, நம்பக்கிட்டதா இருக்குது.